Appreciate it. Everyone could please rise for the pledge.
I'm glad you ladies.
I'm glad.
The United States of America and the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you all. Good evening, everyone. Our first order of business is a public hearing on CB 11's draft capital and expense budget recommendations for fiscal year 2027. At this point, I would like to hear if there's anyone from the public who has any comments on either one. By the way, there's copies up front if anyone needs a hard copy. Any comments? Any questions? Then I would like to close the public. Can I have a motion to close the public? Claudio, seconded by Lib. All in favor, board members? Thank you. Okay. At this point, we're going to open up our public portion, so I know we have electors. But first, I would like to welcome Assemblyman Colton up to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted, first of all, I'd like to board. They're always very talented, and that's always something that benefits the community greatly. There's a number of things that are happening. First of all, one is that my-
Okay. Okay. My office and the office of Councilmember Susan Wong are organizing a children's book drive. We've collected books. I think there may be even some that are still outside because the Federation is one of the collection points, and we've been giving them out to children. Today, we actually went to PS 229 from 2:00, 2:30 to about 3:30, 4:00, and we gave out a lot of books. We're also giving them out in both of our offices on the second and fourth Friday of each month. So tomorrow, we're giving it out from 2:00 to 4:00 in my office, and I believe the council member is also giving it out in front of her office. And we really want to encourage children to get books in their hands and start reading more and more. So that's one thing that, you know, we've started, and we're going to continue that. A second thing is, there was an incident in the subways earlier this week. As I always do, I go to the subways to give out information on my office hours and reach people to see if they have any concerns. And while I was on the Avenue O side of the N Line Bay Parkway station, three constituents told me that there are five men at the entrance, and they are harassing riders to give them a dollar. And if they give them the dollar, the fifth person is standing by the emergency gate, holding it open, and they can get a special discount. And they were very upset about it. And so I went up actually to the street-level entrance to the subway, and I started giving some leaflets out there and watching to see what was going on. And it was exactly as the constituents told me. And apparently, they've been doing this for weeks. So I went back to the platform, and I called 911. And they told me they would send a response, and within 20 minutes, they did respond. And they made an arrest. So my concern is, you know, that we want to make sure this doesn't continue. Hopefully, they won't go to another station, and, you know, if they do, they better make sure it's out of my district, because this is not acceptable. And it was really quite an operation. They had two men at each door, standing there, soliciting the money as the riders would come in, and the fifth guy was standing by the emergency gate, which he was holding open. And a lot of people were using it. They were paying the dollar. So, you know, so that was, you know, I do commend the NYPD. They responded very quickly. I also have been in touch since then with Division 34 Transit Police, and they told me they were going to send anti-crime officers there to see if these guys come back. So they were going to have set up, they wanted to know the times they were there and, you know, information. So hopefully, that will be dealt with. I was a little disturbed because since I did that, constituents started contacting me, and they started telling me the same thing is going on in Manhattan. The same operation with four, five people at West Fourth Street and Lafayette. So it may be a bigger thing than, you know, may explain part of the reason that the Transit Authority is losing $700 million a year. But, you know, we'll see what happens with that. I'm going to stay on top of it. The other thing that happened is I did go to CEC 20 meeting, and I've written letters to the chancellor regarding the after-school programs. They have requests for proposals that are now out for after-school programs. And last year, programs that were approved and had been existing closed down because they said, "You're approved, but we don't have enough money." And the Federation, I think, had programs in that situation, and other organizations also had programs in that situation. And so I sent a letter, you know, to the chancellor and basically, and to the Department of Youth Development, who issues the RFPs, you know, very strongly urging them that they should not make any kind of a qualifying list that disqualifies programs that are existing, because you're impoverishing parents here when you do that. They have a job because they were able to, you know, participate in the after-school program. Now the after-school program gets closed, and they're scrambling how do they keep their job and be able to pay for childcare. So I did raise that point, and I also raised the point about gifted programs. There's been discussions in terms of basically phasing out gifted programs and eliminating basically next, you know, under the next mayoral administration, kindergarten through second grade. That would be a big mistake, I believe. And I think that, you know, parents really are going to have to mobilize, because as a teacher, I know that K-2, early childhood statistically, is very important in the educational development of children. And if you eliminate gifted programs, you may very well end up in a situation where children are going to be bored in those grades, they're not going to be challenged sufficiently, and the result is going to be that they may be turned off to school, and they may never reach their true potential. Likewise, with early intervention with children with special needs. If you don't meet those needs in the early grades, it becomes increasingly difficult to prevent them from being able to achieve what they could otherwise be capable of achieving. So I think that the early grades, both in terms of gifted programs and programs with children with special needs, are very important. And I spoke about that at CEC 20, which I think understands it. And I'm going to continue. I have legislation to require each, the New York City School District, to have gifted programs in all the schools. And Susan is introducing legislation, Susan Wong is introducing legislation in the city council to try to do that also. So we're going to be having to mobilize with parents to fight on that issue. And I'm very concerned that when we see the school budget for this coming year, both on the state level and maybe on the city level, it's going to present a lot of problems. So we're facing challenges in terms of making sure our children get the services, the resources that they need to do well. And I think that's going to be an ongoing story. So basically, I think that, you know, we're going into this year with uncertainty. The federal government is shut down now, and we're going to have to really, you know, stay on top of it and mobilize people to make sure that we don't get a terrible cut in services that's going to hurt our children and our families. And then the last thing is, we are having a tea tasting contest on 86th Street on October 26. Dr. Law and- Yeah, we'll talk more about that. But I think that's going to be something that is very good, and it's going to involve people in the neighborhood, businesses in the neighborhood have an opportunity to participate in that. So everyone, you know, hopefully, if you get a chance, if you're available, go take a look at that. What's that? There is a, there is an event tomorrow on the issue of the gifted programs, where there's going to be a press conference called by Lester Chang and Steve Chan. I support that. I may have a conflict of interest, actually, myself in getting there, because I'm here from 12 to 4, and I also have a book distribution in front of my district office. So I'm going to have a little conflict in terms of getting around to that. But that is something that, you know, I certainly do support. I think that's basically about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name is Vito Labella. I'm the chief of staff and legislative director for Senator Stephen Chan. I would like to thank Assemblymember Colton. It's like when I, when I listen to him, it's like everything old is new again. I was a transit cop for 32 years, and he's talking about hand collectors. I'm like, wow, I had PTSD. Yeah, this has been going on, you know, since I started in 1986, right? So a very, very long time. And thank you for, you know, taking an interest. And it's like, you know, everything else, if you, if you ignore it, it gets worse. So you really have to address it, all of these little minor violations. And Senator Chan knows that. He was a NYPD for 28 years. So we all are on the same page. And I want to thank Bill again for his partnership with the senator. The senator has a same-as Bill for the gifted and talented. We'll be at that press conference tomorrow at 2:00, PS 205, 67th Street and 20th Avenue. And my kids went through these programs. These programs are so important for our community. The desire for these programs far outweighs the capacity. They should be expanding it. Parents want these programs. They really do. So thank you for the assembly member and for Susan, and for all of the people who support these programs, because, again, the CEC 20 and Brooklyn District 20 and South Brooklyn really, I think, really finds them very, very important. So I just want to say, our office is in 66th Street and Fort Hamilton Parkway. We're open. We got a lot of fun stuff coming on. We're going to do a flu clinic coming up, the flu shots, next month. You should be getting our emails. I'm going to pass out some cards. I'll put them on the tables. It has our information on it. And that's it. If you have any questions, please reach out to me, labella@newyorksenate.gov. Does anybody have anything today specifically, this evening, that we can help with, anything going on? I'm sure the homeless shelters, that's up and running. The senator works very closely, again, with our partner to try to just address all of these community concerns. 67th Street and 20th Avenue, PS 205. I'm sorry? 22, you know, there's going to be several community members speaking. CEC John Rickatone is going to be there. Elected officials are going to be there to speak. I'm speaking on behalf of my, in my new role as GOP vice chair for education. I started doing education with Bill in 2018. I retired from the police department to run the PTA 187. I was on the CEC for four years. So, you know, this is, this is something that's really important to me, and so I want to share it. Thank you, everybody.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marco Rico, and I'm a representative for Congresswoman Nicole Malliotakis. I just wanted to let you know that if you guys need any federal assistance, such as agencies with like the IRS, USCIS, or any other federal agency, please feel free to see me in the back at the end of the meeting, and I'll give you a business card. Our office is on 77th Street and 3rd Avenue, and you can look us up, and you can either call our office directly from the site that's on Google, or from a business card, or you can go ahead and schedule an appointment through the website. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chum Dick. I serve on Committee Board 11, but I'm also a, one of the past lieutenant governor of a charity organization called Kiwanis International. Right now, we are planning to form a new club in Bensonhurst, and I have all the information. And we have, upcoming, we have a so-called info meeting on October 16. Their address will be 8608 19th Avenue. That will be on October 16, 7:00 p.m. I have some flyers at the back. If anybody is interested, please come. We have leg refreshment and for you to know more about this charity group. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joyce. I'm presenting for City Council Susan Wong's office. Today, we are talking about budgeting. So that's why I'm here as a budgeting director. So for FY '26, we defined a program we recommend. So that's what we go through every item for the future year '27. We would continue doing what we're going to funding for park night safety issue, and we did additional funding for DSNY for additional pickup for the church. We try to make our community clean. The other thing, we also have coming event, as we know, like October Halloween, we do have trick-or-treat October 31. We do have some free legal service every month. So every month this coming, October 6 is already passed by November 21. Yeah, November 21 will be the next event for free legal service intake. We do have a lot of events, like beside Assemblyman Colton mentioned, we do have a lot of events going on. For further more information, you could reach out our office. You could email me at jxie@council.nyc.gov. Any concern, you could reach out to our office. Thank you. We're here for our community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wincy. I'm a community advocate in the office of Councilmember Alexa Aviles. Some updates. As you know, early voting starts October 25 to November 2, and we have the general elections on November 4. So please be sure to flip your ballot to the other side. There are six ballot proposals, and we highly encourage you to read up on ballot proposals 2 through 4 about housing reforms. They're written in a confusing manner and would take power away from our local communities and into the hands of the mayor and real estate developers. So if you have questions, feel free to contact our office or visit the website, whatsonmyballot.nyc for additional information. We also have flyers on the table about this that you can feel free to take. And this Saturday, October 11, we have a street co-naming ceremony in honor of the late Rosa Casella, who was the former executive director of NIA Community Services Network. It starts at noon at the corner of 11th Avenue and 71st Street, so please join us then. And we continue to have mobile office hours right here in the Fial lobby area, two Thursdays a month from 1 to 5. So please also take a flyer with our upcoming dates. Thanks, everyone.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? My name's Tal Litwin. I am representative for Borough President Antonio Reynoso. And I just have a couple updates. So one is that BP Reynoso's office released a comprehensive plan for Brooklyn last month. I'm not sure if you all know, but New York City, unlike other major cities, does not have a comprehensive plan that guides growth. And so BP Reynoso, attempting to fill that void, has released a plan just for Brooklyn. You can read it on our website at brooklandbp.nyc.gov. And then also, we have the ongoing 2026 Brooklyn pin design competition. So if you are an artist or someone you know is an artist, they can design the next Brooklyn pin. There's flyers there for you if you're interested. And then on Saturday, October 25, we are having an Adopt a Shelter Animal event. So if you're interested in adopting a dog or cat, the event will be right outside Brooklyn Borough Hall from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And that's all. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mirza. I'm standing before you, representing Pineapple Ride, a local nonprofit helping revitalize 9100 Bay Parkway, basically the dead end Caesars Bay. We have led a number of cleanup efforts and general programming efforts over there. Since most of us are from this organization, live in this neighborhood, we're very much leading these efforts with heart and conviction. Next Friday, we will have the Parks Department come by and help us conduct a tree census in Bensonhurst Park, locally known as Cropsey Park. Their teams are going to come, and they're going to show us how to measure, take notes, and generally just record the information on the trees that are over there. And for our efforts, they are going to reward us with some Parks Department memorabilia. Please see me after for registration instructions, as you have to register with the Parks Department to do this. We will be bringing back our Pineapple Plaza at Caesars Bay, November 8, for a final event of the year. As always, it's going to be a free event, free coffee, tea, children's programming, art, Bike New York, hopefully DOT, maybe FDNY as well. If there are any local school streets or dead-end spaces near you that you would like to see turned into something for kids or general community programming, please reach out to me, and we would love to make that happen. Thank you. Have a good day.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nerissa. I'm here with Congresswoman Clark. Just to start off, this is actually my last week with the office, so unfortunately, I won't be representing her anymore. But it's been such a pleasure getting to know the community. Thank you guys for everything you've been doing. It's a business. We will be co-hosting a Central Brooklyn Job Fair on October 21. That's Tuesday, and it's going to be at Brooklyn Public Library. If you or anyone you know is looking for a job, there's going to be onsite hiring, so feel free to come by. We're also still accepting applications for our congressional app challenge. So high school and middle school students who are interested in coding, they can submit it and look at that and make sure that that gets sent forward. I just wanted to quickly address the government shutdown. So as you guys know, the government's responsible for passing an appropriations bill that dictates funding. Unfortunately, that didn't pass this October, so that does shut down a lot of federal agencies. So you all know, federal employees that are furloughed or laid off are eligible to collect unemployment. Furloughed employees who end up receiving back pay will have to repay that unemployment. Unemployment benefits aside from that will continue as normal. Medicare open enrollment is set to begin on October 15, and that will be processed as normal. Medicare and Medicaid benefits will continue to the end of the quarter, though telehealth coverage has ended. Affordable Care Act benefits will continue, but if the shutdown lasts past November 1, premiums will likely skyrocket. Funding for community health centers has since expired, but they do, they will remain open until the reserve funds are depleted. SNAP benefits will also still be paid. WIC benefits may continue to be funded through tariff revenue. Social Security and SSI will be paid, but SSI will run out at the end of December. FAFSA applications remain open. Federal financial aid will be dispersed, and student loan repayments are still mandatory. Public-facing services through the IRS, like e-filing systems, payment processing, and tax refunds, will remain active, but other processing, paperwork processing will be slowed down. Congressional offices normally do perform inquiries on behalf of constituents. Unfortunately, with the shutdown, the agencies will likely not be responsive, so we will, they will be processed once the government's reopens. If you're contacting any agency, feel free to try. They might be a little bit slower in their responses, but again, there will still be limited services available. Thank you. Feel free to find me in the back if you have any questions.
Hi, I'm Nancy Roden with Councilwoman David Carr's office. There were a lot of complaints about national grid work being done on 86th Street, so the councilman's office was in constant conversation with them to make it safer. They have to do the work, but it was, if anybody drove down 86th Street, they saw how unsafe it was. So they did make some adjustments on it. And basically, he's got a very small portion of Brooklyn, but he's on top of everything that happens, and he's very open to helping anyone who needs. So if anybody needs, you can email me at nroden.council.gov, nyc.gov, if you need anything. All right, I'm quick.
And good evening, everyone. My name is Tamby John. I'm the branch manager for Music Library, located at 1743 86th Street. And I'm here to talk about BPL and what we're offering. BPL has appointed a new chief librarian, Edwin Maxwell. We also have Ready-Set Kindergarten. That's that. It is a six-session series that kicks off this month for children ages 3 to 5, and their caregivers at 20 branches around Brooklyn and online. Families will receive free materials to continue the learning fun at home. We also offering Cultural Pass program that allows you to receive passes to many cultural institutions, love events, and more with the use of your Brooklyn Public Library card. There's, the New York, the New York Library has begun renovation talks with the Department of Housing Preservation and Development, HPD, as part of the Living Libraries Initiative. HPD is currently conducting weekly information sessions at the branch. They are surveys and questionnaires for community feedback, available in person and online. They are also looking to table and to partner with additional community interests and organizations. On November 18, from 5:30 to 7:30, HPD will be conducting a community visioning workshop at the library. RSVP online or for more information, you can contact us. Then I just want to mention that Music Library and the Highland Branches, which I'm also here on behalf of, will continue to provide programming for a variety of ages. And for more information about what I just said, because it's a lot, visit our website at brooklinelibrary.org.
Good evening. My name is Paul Aguirre with the Brooklyn District Attorney's Office, led by Eric Gonzalez. Just two brief announcements. This coming Wednesday, October 15, we'll be having our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. It'll be at Viva Toro, which is 987 Grand Street. And then the following day, we'll be having our Diwali celebration, October 16. That's a Thursday, 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Tillery Hotel, which is 85 Flatbush Avenue. And I'll leave flyers in the back. Thank you.
Do I have anyone else from the public? Anyone else? Can I have a motion to close? Claudio made a motion. His hand was up before I even said it. Joe, second. All in favor? Any days? Okay, thank you. At this point, Ross will do a roll call of the folks who are not here.
Thank you. If you're called, and you are here, let us know. If you're not here, please remain silent. Simon Cheek, Ashley Lauren Elrod, Mateo Frontelli, Chi Por Lee, Donald Lau, Xiaorong Liu, Nancy Sotill, Sotille, and Raymond Wei Ming Wong. Oh, there's another. And Daniel Zurich. Either of you here? Okay, we have a forum anyway, so thank you. Who's that? I didn't call Emily. Then do they? We didn't call you because you're here.
No, we did call her name. No, we did. So you're here, Emily. Oh, welcome. Before, before I jump into the next item, I just, I just have to say how happy I am that this has been the best attendance that we've had. Great to everyone. Thank you to all our members. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we have a presentation by Frank Jolka on the upcoming ballot proposal. So Frank?
How's everyone doing? Thank you. Thank you for replying. Let me just get my presentation real quick. But thank you, Chair, and community board members for having me. My name is Frank Julka, and as they were mentioning, I'm going to be talking today about Eric Adams' ballot proposals, specifically proposals two to four. Like we mentioned earlier from Councilmember Abilis' office, the language in those proposals is very much misleading. I think it is very agreed amongst council folks that it's really misrepresenting a lot of the community power that you're about to be losing and really oversimplifying the entire ULR process. Yes? Yeah. No worries. No worries. So, I just want to go over some of the ballot items that you're going to be seeing in the back of your ballot, which is six proposals. The first one is going to be the statewide proposal, which is just to amend upstate parkland. And then from two to six are the citywide ones, which two to four are the mayor's ballot proposals on land use and affordable housing. And then question five is modernize the city map. Question six, move local elections to presidential years following a future state constitutional amendment. So, as I mentioned, I'm only going to be going through two to four, and obviously, I will open it up for questions afterwards. By show of hands, how many of you know what the city charter is? Great. I see a few hands. Awesome. So, the city charter is pretty much the city's constitution, right? It sets up all of the processes from the city. And a charter revision commission, which is the way in which these ballot proposals got on the ballot, really seeks to amend the charter in perpetuity. Now, how many of you know what the ULR process is? Anyone? I see one hand. Great. So, this is why this presentation is important, because in many ways, the mayor is counting on you not knowing these things, not knowing what the ULR process is. So, I'm just going to go over it. These are pretty much the rules that control the size and use of every building in the city. And if a developer wants to change those rules, they must go through a land use process, which is the ULR process. ULR stands for Uniform Land Use Review Procedure. And the current process really was designed to ensure developer accountability and community power. So, the way in which the ULR is set up, which is about seven months, there is multiple advisory stages, including one for community boards. There's also the CPC, which is the City Planning Commission, also reviews that. And then at the very end is where the council comes in, and your local council member will go back to the community to really ask for those community benefits and demand them to the developers. So, that's how they've really been able to push for affordable housing, deep affordable housing, parks, schools, renovations to the MTA subway. That is the way in which council members are really able to secure community benefits. And I also want to point out that the ULR process that I just mentioned is about seven months, but the pre-certification is two to five years. And these ballot proposals are only addressing the time that the council takes to review, which is 50 to 65 days. 50 days all total and 65 with some modifications. And it does nothing to address the two to five pre-certification stage that actually takes the most time. I just want to point that out. Yes. So, I'm going to go through each of the questions. Okay? So, I'm going to go through question four first. And question, I mean, question two first. And question two has really two main components. Okay? It transfers the voting power from your elected representatives from your community, meaning your council members, to a mayor-appointed board, which is the Board of Standards and Appeals. The second one, the second component that this question has, is that it transfers the voting power from your council member to the City Planning Commission for housing development projects in certain community districts. So, all of this to say that all of the voting power would really be turned from some elected officials and some unappointed officials to purely appointed officials by the mayor. And pretty much, your community would be left without a voice. I do want to say that for question two specifically, some community boards are being targeted. And as of right now, your community board is one of them that is on the list that hasn't produced enough housing. But this list, for now, is preliminary. It's really not going to be counted until next year. Perfect. Yes. You know? Okay. And I just definitely want to address question two and the language that you will see, because the way it sounds, it sounds pretty awesome. Fast-track, publicly financed affordable housing, fast-track application delivering affordable housing in the community districts that produce the least affordable housing. So, it mentions affordable housing, but it's not letting you know that it's going to be pretty much 20% to 30% affordable housing in all of these new developments. All of the rest are going to be market rate. And then this 20% to 30% of affordable housing will be affordable housing through the housing lotteries, which I don't know about you all, but I also live in Brooklyn, and I most definitely am not able to afford a lot of those still. So, what this question would do would be pretty much take away the council's review process and then just leave it all to mayor-appointed officials. Question three. Question three really, the voting power is going to be transferred entirely to mayor-controlled City Planning Commission. And that is going to mean that housing development in low-density districts would be ending. So, it would be pretty much ending the one-to-two-family home zoning. And housing development in median-to-high-density districts would increase by about 30%. That means that a one-to-two-family home would really turn into a four-flight building or apartment. And then same with some of those underbuilt one-to-two-family homes, they could become even more dense. So, yeah. It just, again, eliminates the voice and power of the community. And you will see that it also, again, mentions modest amounts of additional housing, but that would effectively mean that it doubles. The one-to-two-family homes are going to double in size. And then the fourth one, which is, I believe, the one that really all of the council members agree is the worst one, is the appeals board that is being proposed in proposal four. So, it establishes an appeals board that can overturn decisions of your community's elected officials, even when they have approved a proposal to meet local needs. And this appeals board, at the end of the ULR process, would be composed of the mayor, the respective board of president, and the council speaker, meaning really no one from your community, really all citywide elected officials. It weakens communities negotiating power to gain more affordable housing and investment for local parks, schools, transits, et cetera. So, then again, really no community input, mostly all of it being moved to citywide or to unelected officials. Just going to give a few examples of gains that have been given. The Atlantic Avenue Mixed Use Plan that Councilmember Hudson and Ose were able to push through, where they were able to really get 900 units of affordable housing across five public sites and $135 million to fund and redesign the Atlantic Avenue Strip. Those happened because the council members had the power to negotiate. I don't know about you, but I'm not trusting Eric Adams and wealthy developers with my community and my community's housing. Then some other examples. I just want to mention the Gowanus rezoning of 2021 that was through Councilmember Brad Lander. And I do know that he is supporting these proposals, which I don't know how Councilmember Brad Lander would feel, because he was able to secure over 8,000 units, infrastructure investments, $200 million in capital to rehabilitate local NYCHA developments. All of that happened mostly because he had the negotiating power to do so. And then just want to go through the language that you're going to see again. It's going to say affordable. It's going to say that. It's going to paint it in a way in which doesn't mention that all of the things that I have mentioned so far. So, just want to go through what the argument from the other side is, which is that the council and the communities that the council represents are often an obstruction for new housing. But that is just not true. The New York City Council approves about 93% of all ULR applications that it has. And since January of 2022, the council has approved over 130,000 units of housing with a focus on affordability. And the council is the only elected body that secures community benefits through the ULR process. It is the only democratically-elected body that has the negotiating power in the ULR process to ask for the best for your communities. So, that's pretty much it. What is it that you can do next? Like, a lot of people have mentioned election day is coming up. Make sure that you register to vote. Early voting begins on Saturday, October 25th. Also, the last day to register is October 25th. And if you would like to learn more about everything that I've spoken, you can go to whatsonmyballot.nyc. Again, whatsonmyballot.nyc. And I do believe that there are some palm cards as well, but I have some with me, and I just appreciate all of you for having me.
Sure.
So, actually, we're a team here.
It's the board, though.
Okay. I'd like to know. I really appreciate you clarifying question three and whatever I could pick on. I'm wondering why it even wasn't allowed to be put on if it's not clear.
The question is, why was it allowed to be even put on if it's not clear?
We need to be able to be transparent. If our city is transparent, it should be in clear, easy language.
It should be in clear, easy language to understand.
No. I definitely got the question. And yes. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm sorry. So, I'm passionate about transparency. I understand sides, more than one side. But it doesn't make sense to me that we as voters, and many of our voters, don't have a high reading level. Sorry to say that. We all have different abilities. But I'd like to be able to understand it too, and I feel like it's going to be very confusing for me. Normally, I wouldn't even vote when I don't understand the question. So, I appreciate your coming here and giving us clarity. Now, the question for you or for anyone here, why is it even written like this? Why is it confusing? I didn't see the actual question, honestly. But I'm taking your word for it. Oh, sorry.
No, no, no worries. No worries. Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. No. In many ways, you are speaking the council's side. I think we have been trying to educate community as much as possible, because you're right. It is written in the law that these questions have to be clear for people. And not only clear, but accurate. And obviously, there is a certain amount of words that they're able to use, but the words that they chose are misleading in nature. And these things are not being told to us. They're not being told that the democratic process is really about to be tilted. And all of the power is going to go to appointed mayoral officials. So, that's really why I'm here and why the council member has also been doing outreach, because we need to inform them that Eric Adams cannot do this again. He already did it last year. There was ballot proposals two to six last year that took away a lot of the council's power. And this time, they're going after your neighborhoods. So, I guess I'm preaching to the choir, which is very, I'm very glad to hear. And I'm happy to take any other questions and follow up afterwards. Happy to give anyone my contact. But you're incredibly correct. They're counting on people just looking at the positive language and voting yes. But we need to inform our communities, and we need to educate them.
Thank you, Frank. Sorry about that. Okay. Moving right along. Everyone got a copy of the minutes from the September 10th meeting? Are there any edits or corrections to the minutes? Do I have a motion to accept? Ross, second by Sonia. All in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? All right. Moving right along. Okay. We need to dispose of the public hearing for the capital expense budget recommendations for fiscal year 2027. The executive committee met on September 25th to go over and review the draft, and they recommended to accept as presented. I need to know from CB board members, are there any comments or questions or edits to either plan? No? Okay. I need a motion. Kathy's making a motion. Angelo, second. All in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. Moving right along, right into my report. I'll be fast, I swear. So, I mentioned that we met, the executive committee met on September 25th. Besides going over the capital expense, there was also a request for a letter of support from Crescent Health to operate a volunteer ambulance service. The principals of Crescent Health came to that meeting. They presented to us. They work and they live in our community. Their goal is to give back to the community and fill the gap of ambulance services. They would be operating in the areas that were previously served by Bensonhurst Volunteer Ambulance Service, which is no longer in existence. So, they're asking for a letter of support from CB 11. And so, does anybody have any? The committee recommended that we write the letter of support. But before we do anything, are there any questions or comments or any discussion about this letter of support for Crescent Health's ambulance service? I'm just going to reiterate what you said so that they could hear it on the livestream. Angelo Bruno's saying that we should do it because it would fulfill what we're missing all this time. Right. We're lacking. Okay. So, then does someone want to make a motion to do the letter of support for Crescent? Angelo Bruno, seconded by Chung.[1700.03] Angelo Bruno, seconded by Chung, all in favor? Any nays? Any abstentions? Great, moving right along. Okay. At the June meeting, I know that was a long time ago, feels like it, before the summer, we had a public hearing on a special permit app for 1616 McDonald Avenue. At that meeting, we voted as a board to table the recommendation until the applicant presents the findings of the shadow study. Remember that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So they are going to present again to planning and zoning on October 21st at Health Essentials at 7:00 PM, which is on 23rd Avenue and 86th Street, but the caveat is, the Board of Standards and Appeals scheduled a public hearing for the same day. Yeah, so Monty already wrote to BSA to request that they continue their hearing until we make a recommendation at our November meeting. Because remember, planning and zoning committee would meet October 21st, and then they have to bring it to the November meeting for the board to vote on. So she's requested that they, you know, keep it until we do our piece of it, so keep you apprised of that. Last month's meeting and tonight, we all heard from Merza about Pineapple Plaza, who spoke about the Open Streets events and the programs that are going on at 9100 Bay Parkway and, in simpler terms, Caesar Bay area. Over the summer, there was a lot of program that went on, included cleanup, CPR training, and a lot of educational events, bike events. So they are asking us for a letter of support for their application to participate in the 2026 Summer Open Streets Program. Any discussion? No? No, Victoria's making a motion right off the bat. Do it, do it.
Great idea.
Great idea, Angelo's, all in favor? Great. Any nays, any abstentions? All right, thank you, I'm done, and now it's our district manager.
Thank you so much. The Department of Transportation notified the board that they approved a traffic signal at the intersection of Dayhill Road and Avenue O. If you're familiar with that area, it's a T-intersection. Back in 2023, we lost a resident, Elizabeth Perez, right over the next block over on 63rd Street and Dayhill Road. So there were requests put in for a traffic study there, and they approved it. And this is the first step in a complex construction process, which involves surveying, design, permitting, and construction. They will begin by conducting a field survey, so you may see people out there, people that live in the area, so you know what's going on. And they will develop a plan and design based upon state and federal guidelines. The design outline will give precise placement of all components of the signal system, and once the design is finalized, city contractors will secure a permit to initiate construction. That requires coordination by all the utility companies. The installation timeline varies, but it should take about six months, and I'm sure that'll be very welcome to that area. DOT further advised that they will be installing two new shared-use lockers within the district as part of Locker NYC, which is a pilot program that aims to cut down on package thefts. We all hear all the time that somebody had a package delivered and it's gone, or we see people walking the streets and they actually follow trucks and seal your packages. So now you will have an opportunity for those businesses that participate to use the locker, which are free and available 24/7. They will be located in front of 1769 Bath Avenue and 7901 18th Avenue. So that's exciting for those people that are constantly targeted to have that service. The Department of Design and Construction began preliminary contract drawings for green infrastructure in Owl's Head 15, Gravesend Bay Combined Sewer Outfall Area. We call it the Phase Four, just for the record. The project's scope includes the design of permeable pavement via the use of green infrastructure assets called precast porous concrete panels. These panels will be along the curb in the approximate area of 65th Street to 83rd Street from 14th Avenue to Bay Parkway, as well as 17th Avenue to 21st Avenue from Cropsey to 83rd Street. The project will start construction in fiscal year 2028, so that's a little bit over two years from now. And on that note, I just want to share that we're expecting some flooding this weekend. A nor'easter is supposed to come up. So I beg our neighbors who live near a catch basin, you know, it's October, we have a lot of leaves falling. Sanitation will be out there, but if you can, just make sure they're clear so that our stormwater flows. While testing soil in preparation for an upcoming capital improvement project in Bensonhurst Park, it was found that there were some elevated levels of metals in the surface soils and portions of the oval. Out of an abundance of caution, they have fenced off the area and covered them with wood chips in accordance with discussions and procedures acceptable to the Department of Health. Complete remediation of the soil will be done as part of the capital project, which is anticipated to start this spring. In addition, we had some vandalism of the men's room, so that is closed, as well as a collapsing roof in the women's room. So we have no bathrooms, work orders have been made, and supplies have been ordered, and it should be repaired shortly. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Moving along, we have committee reports. Ross is going to present on planning and zoning.
Thank you, I'll be brief. The planning and zoning committee met on September 16th to hear a presentation by an applicant's attorney, Eric Pilotnik, on a proposed zoning map amendment to rezonate manufacturing in M112 and R7 C24 overlay to facilitate development of a new 13-story mixed-use development at 2525 65th Street. Now, if you can picture 2525 65th Street, this would be a piece of property that's, and tell me if I'm incorrect, is a lot with one-story businesses, which are either in business or not business at the time, near McDonald Avenue where there is subway access. So it's a different kind of parcel of land than we're usually looking at here. The proposed development will have 172 residential units, 43 to 52 permanently affordable community facility and commercial space. It will contain a mixture of studio or one-bedroom apartments, but also two- and three-bedroom units and 166 parking spaces. They promise. The buildings were designed to activate upon the existing intersection, which I described, at proposed heights of six stories, or 65 feet, eight stories at 85, and 13 stories, which is 135. The proposed development will attempt to create a more enclosed area consistent, with a consistent street wall. Additionally, there will be a transit easement, which we discussed at earlier meetings, to provide ADA-compliant elevator access to the elevated train and a plaza at the corner of Dayhill Road and McDonald Avenue. Currently, there's no formal land use application before the board. Once the Department of City Planning certifies the application, it'll be referred to our community board. And we'll begin the process of the detailed Uniform Land Use Review Procedure, the EULAR, while we have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, moving on, do we have any new business? Come up, you got to come up because they can't hear you.
[inaudible] Okay. No, 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 no. Good evening, everyone. Okay. Very happy to make a short announcement. Okay, our organization, Chinese-American Social Service Center, will co-sponsor with the New York State Assemblyman, Mr. William Colton. New York City Councilmember Susan John will be hosting a street fair on October 26th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, at 86th Street, 25th Avenue, and Bay 40th Street. And most importantly, that day, we're going to holding a tea party, okay? You'll taste a different kind of tea.
Tea tasting, not tea party.
Tea tasting, okay, whatever, okay? You'll have oolong and jasmine tea, different kind of tea from different, different locations, okay? Dr. He, will you please mention a little bit? Mr. Wu, also our executive director of our organization.
Thank you, thank you. And so this year, we're going to have more than tea samples from more than 20 countries being set up and free to the residents and all the participants. And most importantly, our community board also will have a booth. Please do come. Thank you.
Thank you, Monty. Thank you, Melanie. We're going to see you there, okay? And our chairperson, too. Thank you. Everybody, please to join us on that day.
If you have an organization, you don't have tea, that's fine. You got, please talk to me, I have a lot of teas.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. [applause]
Hello, everyone. Just to let you know, I'm the president of the 62 Precinct Community Council. We meet monthly, once a month. We're going to be meeting on Wednesday, October 22nd, at the 62nd Precinct. Please join us. This is the one place where you could speak one-on-one to a police officer, face-to-face, there are some in the back. Hi, guys. So join us, because you could tell them any issues or concerns you have. If you give me at the end your email address and your name, I'll put you on the list so you'll know when it is that we're meeting, okay? Also, October 11th is Saturday. I'm on the committee also for the parade, the file. This organization is having the parade, starting at 1:00 from 60th Street and 18th Avenue. It's the longest parade in the city, so please come join us, and that is it.
Do I have any other new business? Do I have any old business? Do I have a motion? Chung, motion, Glib, second, all in favor to adjourn for the evening? Thank you all, have a wonderful night.